Declare this session of the Tolton Valley Water District Board of Commissioners to order. First items on, or first item on the agenda tonight is a report by the Chief Executive Officer and Management Staff.
Good evening, President Burke, members of the board. We will start, as we do every large meeting, with a Safety Minute, and the Safety Minute this evening will be delivered by Andrew Carlstrom, our Manager of Customer Services.
Good evening, President Burke, Board of Commissioners. Tonight's safety moment is seasonal in that flu season is soon upon us. First, a few flu facts. The flu, as you probably know, is a contagious respiratory illness. It's caused by influenza viruses. It can cause mild to severe illness. It infects the nose, throat, and lungs. It can lead to hospitalization, even death. The Centers for Disease Control, or CDC, recommends getting an annual flu vaccine so that you reduce not only your risk of getting the flu, but also spreading flu to others. There is, in fact, a flu season which can begin as early as October but run through as late as May, and as this chart from the CDC shows, the peak is about February. But again, it can start as early as October, which makes this presentation timely. A few statistics on the flu for the United States since 2010. Quite a bit of variability year to year, but deaths run between 12,000 and 56,000. More hospitalizations, and the number of flu cases literally runs in the tens of millions. Flu symptoms, you're probably all familiar with: fever, cough, sore throat, runny or stuffy nose, muscle or body aches, headaches, and fatigue. And in terms of how the flu spreads, mainly by droplets, the virus is contracted when people with the flu cough, sneeze, or actually just talk, and those droplets can land in the mouths or noses of people who are nearby. Another mechanism is if someone touches a surface or object with a flu virus on it and then touches their own mouth, eyes, or nose. So, how can you avoid getting the flu? Well, the CDC recommends getting an annual flu vaccine. This is your single most important step you can take in protecting against flu viruses, especially important for those who are high-risk of flu: children under five, adults over 65, pregnant women, and residents of nursing homes and extended care facilities. So, as the CDC says, don't get the flu, don't spread the flu, get vaccinated.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you very much.
A few important introductions this evening. First of all, I want to introduce our new Executive Assistant, Catherine LaPerry-Dessau. Catherine is functioning this evening as the backup district recorder and backup for essentially taking the minutes and recording the meeting, and will, of course, continue to function as my Executive Assistant, and she also provides assistance to Clark. Goodness knows he needs it. And so, also joining us this evening, I believe, is Fay Branton. She's had to step out for a minute, but she'll be sitting back here because both Fay and Catherine will be providing backup because Debbie Werner will be out of the office for a couple of weeks in early October, and so we want to make sure that everybody's all schooled up in terms of providing backup services for Debbie. I also want to introduce this evening our new IT Services Director, Tim Boylan. Tim joins us. He's got a long background in terms of IT management experience, going to add a lot to our organization. He probably won't be joining us for every board meeting, although he is a department manager, but really only when we have IT issues of policy significance that will come before the board, which I expect will happen in the future, but we wanted him here this evening, again, just to kind of understand how the board meeting works. And last but not least, I want to introduce Andrew Barrett. Andrew joined us recently, some very good and relevant experience locally, and Andrew joins us, working for Cary as an Engineering Associate within the Engineering Department, adding to yet another PE that we have on staff. With that, again, I mean, we've added a lot of very important staff over the last couple of months, and it's very exciting in terms of the growth that we've been experiencing. I wanted to, as you undoubtedly noticed, on your desks this evening, we have new video monitors. This was in response to feedback that we'd received from the Commissioners that you find it very hard to see the screen for the regular presentations, and so we tried very, kind of, a little bit of trial and error, but very strategically tried to make sure the monitors are big enough that you can see them, but not so big that they kind of eclipse your view of the meeting or the meeting's view of you. And so, we would like some feedback from you, you know, after the meeting. Give me a call, whatever. Let me know how the new monitors are working out for you. But again, this was really to improve your ability to have access to the information being presented. Just a quick, kind of, it's a little inside baseball, I guess, but I wanted to let you know that the Oregon Health Authority, earlier this year, proposed an amendment to the Oregon Administrative Rules which would add a requirement for water providers to include a seismic risk assessment and mitigation plan to the required scope of a water master plan. Now, why do we bring that up? Well, the fact of the matter is that myself, Todd Perriman, Commissioner Doan, all worked on the Oregon Resilience Plan that resulted in this as a recommendation in the Oregon Resilience Plan, and now the Oregon Health Authority has basically adopted that recommendation and are trying to integrate that particular requirement into the Oregon Administrative Rules. We find that very encouraging. It's a little challenging inasmuch as some of our friends within the industry have pushed back on this proposed rule. I think some of the concerns comes from some of the smaller water providers, water providers that don't believe they have a particularly significant risk in that regard. And so unless the board objects, I intend to provide formal comments to the Oregon Health Authority as well as the Oregon Water Utility Council, expressing TBWD's support for the proposed rule change, and highlight TBWD's success in actually completing these kind of studies and integrating them as part of our master plan.
I want to encourage you in the strongest possible way to express what our support of the rule changes, and, you know, without saying anything about our brethren who have decided that this isn't important. We believe it's important, and, you know, I noticed that today in the lobby, we have always talked about a 72-hour kit, a three-day kit, to get ready for disasters, and I noticed in the lobby that the Water Providers Consortium is talking about 14 days, which is nearly a five-fold increase, and that's because I think the reality of what this place is going to look like after we have a large seismic event is starting to sink home, and I want to encourage you to push really hard to keep these rules the way they are.
Okay, I will, I will, I will do so. Quick update on the Eagle Creek Fire. You know, as you know, I've been providing daily updates to the board from the Portland Water Bureau in terms of the status of the Eagle Creek Fire. As we'd reported, based on information from the Water Bureau on Monday, the fire peaked at about 40,000, 48,000 acres. About 150,000, 150 acres were burned within the Bull Run Watershed Management Unit. The fire didn't actually reach the physical drainage of the watershed, so there is a boundary outside the physical drainage, and that's called the management unit, and it was that buffer between the physical drainage and the border of the management unit that actually was included in that 150 acres that was burned. So the good news is there was no direct effect on water quality, and from that standpoint, the Water Bureau reports that the water remains safe to drink, particularly with the recent rains. I heard earlier from Commissioner Schmidt that there was about six inches of the rain on the fire today. Hopefully, that slows things down, but I'm confident, based on our contacts in the firefighting industry, that the fact of the matter is they're going to continue to be monitoring this fire for a long time to come, just because of the risk of the fire kind of going subterranean and then popping out later. So, again, we'll continue to monitor it, but we'll probably not be providing daily reports going forward. Last but not least is the department report. So in keeping with the district's mission to provide the community with quality water and customer service, Andrew Carlstrom will be providing an extremely important update tonight on the status of the district's online payment system. Andrew?
Great. Well, good evening again, Board of Commissioners. Tonight's presentation is on our new TBWD Clean Water Services payment system, which, as you know, is Paymentis. And first, some takeaways from this report. Our new system is Paymentis. Why the change? Well, as you know, customers and staff have been dissatisfied with the now outgoing system. With Paymentis, we'll have a simple user interface, more payment options. Go-live date for customers is tomorrow, Thursday, September 21st. TBWD is ready to support customers in this transition. We're very excited about it. Customers using credit card auto pays will need to re-register with Paymentis. There are some customers using bank drafts who will also need to re-register. TBWD will be seamlessly PCI compliant in this transition. We'll be rolling out additional functionalities this fall. And lastly, both TBWD and Clean Water Services appreciate customer patience with this change. So first, a deeper dive into why are we making this transition to a new payment system? And instead of giving you information you've already seen, I thought it'd be interesting for you to see some of the responses that we've received from customers in response to our notification about the change. And I think Toni encapsulates it well, and she's obviously pleased to see the change, and she reiterates that the current online bill pay system is absolutely frustrating, and that's the reason why we conducted this project, is feedback from customers like Toni. I'm not going to read all these, but as you can see from Sue and Chelsea and Mike, they have similar sentiments, and Sasha is obviously very excited for the transition. So, a little more about the user interface and the payment options. Again, as I've said, the user interface is extremely simple. It's device-friendly, it has responsive design. Customers will have the option of making a one-time or quick payment without registering. I gave you two screenshots there in the right, just to reiterate the simplicity of the interface. They'll also be able to pay by text and also by secure PDF, which would appear in their email inbox. We'll have one login for customer account information, making payments, and also for bill history, so we'll be retiring the TBWD website option where customers would go to see their bill history. And finally, we'll still have the interactive voice response or IVR option, although there will be a new number for the Paymentis IVR. Oh, and Nick, this is another customer who wrote in in response to our notification. He did a pretty good job at highlighting both parts of our mission statement, just in terms of quality water and customer service, and we appreciate his comment. So, a little history for those who haven't seen this before, not to belabor it, but our march towards a new payment system. Two years ago, we implemented a third-party payment solution, both web and IVR, to be compliant with the payment card industry. As we all know, customers have been dissatisfied with this system. They found it confusing, difficult to use, and some of the more frequent comments we get are about password resets and security functionality. Todd, another customer who responded recently, did a pretty good job of describing some of the frustration that customers have, just in terms of having to be locked out of their system and call in to get their password reset, and that's time for them, that we're really excited about being able to offer them a better product. So, 2016, we, as you know, we started our assessment. We concluded that, yeah, we need to implement a replacement to Velocity, and in advance of our billing system replacement, we conducted a very exhaustive and rigorous process to select a new product. We included customers. We marched down our, towards the implementation, and we're going live tomorrow. So Pamela, yet another customer who responded to our recent notification, looks forward to being able to pay her bill online again, and we're really excited that she can. So tomorrow, customers can go to tbwd.org/payonline to register with Paymentis. We have notified customers of the go-live date and the changes, and what we're going to do to remind customers again, instead of sending out a big blast on the go-live date, we're going to stage it by bill cycle so they get a more timely reminder. And that will be to the now-former Velocity customers who have not registered with Paymentis. We'll scrub out those who have already registered by the time their bill cycle goes out. We also have another group of customers who are, receive paperless bills but are not Velocity customers. We'll be sending them an email tomorrow about the change, and I'll have more on that in just a moment. So TBWD is definitely ready to support customers in this transition, and this customer, Sue, who again responded to our notification, she describes really that we're all trying to get to the same goal, and that's a better customer payment experience. So we're looking forward to helping customers, first and foremost, to provide a better payment system, a better product. We'll be very eager to help customers if they have any questions in this transition, if they need a walkthrough on the Paymentis registration or setting up their auto pays, but again, the user interface is extremely simple. As I said earlier, customers using auto pay for credit cards will need to re-register. Lee asks, will this affect our auto pay method? Well, yes, it will, but again, it's a very simple registration. Customers will need their account number, their ID number from either their bill or the transition letter we sent out. And for those paperless customers who currently are not Velocity users but receive paperless bills, they'll need to register with Paymentis to continue those paperless bills, but they're not required to actually pay on Paymentis if they decide not to. Customers using bank drafts, a customer, Edward, wrote in that he's deployed and will be back next year, and he wanted to continue with his normal automatic draft. So, two categories on the bank drafts. One, customers who submitted forms directly to TBWD will not need to re-register, and that's because we were able to transfer the information. We had it, we uploaded it to Paymentis, so they will not have to register. However, if they do, they'll be able to see their bill and their payment history. Those customers who registered with Velocity and are drawing on a checking account, they will need to re-register, just like credit card customers. We could not transfer that information, but again, they will need to re-register. As I said, we'll be rolling out additional functionalities this fall. First and foremost are the emergency assistance donations, as required in the contract that we have with Paymentis, and that'll be both for the one-time payments and for auto pays. We're also going to move our customer service requests from the TBWD website to the Paymentis portal. It has better functionality, and our intention is to keep it there after the district transitions to a new district-wide website in the future. Again, the reason for going to a third-party in 2015 was the payment card industry data security standard. That's still a requirement for us to continue accepting credit card payments, so for that reason, PCI compliance is still something we need to adhere to. Fortunately, Paymentis has already established PCI compliance with many clients, so that'll be seamless from Velocity to Paymentis. And finally, to TBWD and Clean Water Services customers, you spoke and we listened. We thank you for your feedback. That's, your feedback is the reason we did this project, and we implemented a new system, and we thank you for your patience as we go through this transition, but we're happy to help you. If you need to call us, 848-503-848-3000, or email us. And again, tomorrow, September 21st is the go-live date. Go to tbwd.org/payonline, and we'll be happy to help you. That's my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Go ahead.
I just want to add my thanks for this transition. My water bill arrived last week, so I had the experience of one last payment on the Velocity system, and it was a full-on. I mean, it was, you need to change your password. Well, you can't use any passwords that you used the last eight times. So I'm so glad to see the end of that, and thank you for all your work.
Any other comments?
We've just been bringing a check down.
Yeah. You know, it's interesting. I don't think that folks out there in large numbers will ever know the intensity of effort that has been made by staff to come up with a system that both complied with new security requirements, which is what started this whole thing to begin with, and at the same time, provide the kind of usability that our ratepayers deserve. It's been a grief-laid process for our staff, and it took a while because of the nature of the task, but they have come through very, very well, and I want to thank you and all the members of staff that were involved for an excellent job, and I know, I'm confident that the ratepayers will be likewise appreciative. So thank you very much.
I actually have a quick question, if you don't mind. I hope that's all right. We didn't practice this.
Of course.
So is there a cost to customers who pay through Paymentis?
No, there's, there's, there's no transaction fee for customers.
There you go. Again, I would, I would thank you and your team. This has clearly been a huge team effort. We've got a bunch of great professionals, both in terms of, from customer service, from IT, from finance, who have worked on this diligently over the last several months, but I particularly want to call attention to Andrew's leadership of this effort. He really had a clear vision in terms of where he wanted to go with this, worked a process that really helped change how we deliver IT projects within the organization from that standpoint. It, I think, points us in a great direction moving forward in the future, so thank you.
I'm really glad that he did it using modern equipment. If I'd have done it, I would have tried to use TRS-80s and Apple II's, it just wouldn't have been pretty. It was great.
If there are no other questions, that concludes the staff report for this evening.
Just a comment about flu shots. Our family belongs to a local, large HMO, and when you walk in there and walk through a shot, they say, "Gotcha." They land, wait.
Good to know.
Is there anything more from management staff tonight? That's it? Okay, so now we'll go to Commissioner Communications, reports of meetings attended, and I guess, for no particular reason, I will start with Commissioner Bagnall.
So, on the 22nd of August, I attended the Rates Open House, where we were, one of three open houses, where we were seeking public input on our new rate structure, and had a lot of wonderful questions, good interaction from the public. I was thrilled to see people take time on a summer evening to come in and talk with us about what we're doing, and it was a really good way to communicate the changes. On the 5th of September, I attended a board work session, primarily dominated by Willamette Water Supply Project update and other district business. Then we had a special board meeting on the 12th of September, and that was to work on, you know, the work of the district and to, to agree on a purchase and sale agreement. Lastly, I have tonight's meeting, our regular board meeting. That's it.
Commissioner Schmidt?
I have three. I also attended the work session, the special board meeting, and tonight's regular board meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Doan?
I have the same grouping that Commissioner Schmidt has with the addition of the Aloha Business Association meeting, which I attended on September 14th.
Thank you. Commissioner Dian?
I also attended the Rates Open House. It was held on August 22nd. On September 5th, I attended the board work session where we talked about rates and had an executive session. On September 6th, I attended the Regional Water Providers Consortium Executive Committee, which meets three times a year, and at that meeting, we got updates from staff. We, as an executive committee, talked about budget concepts for next year, and it looks like the dues that will be assessed for all the members will be roughly the same for next year, but there is a significant carryover from last year due to the fact that there were some staff positions that were open and unfilled, and they didn't have that expense that had been planned, so they were, staff had proposed a series of projects that could be done with the money that would be a carryover otherwise or used to reduce rates, things that needed to be done, and the board debated what would be the best use of that money for one-time projects that were as mundane as updating conservation materials that haven't been updated in more than 10 years. So that was a good discussion. We also received an update about the activities on the regional water providers' websites, such as the fact that the drinking water advisory tool, where currently if people go to conserveh2o.org, can right now look up who their water provider is by entering their address during the drinking water, or excuse me, during the boil water notice event that the district had. That was up and running, and it was able to pinpoint what properties had to have their water boiled to be extra safe in terms of the drinking water that might have been compromised by a construction incident. So that was a useful tool that the Regional Water Providers Consortium provides for everyone that lives in the Portland metropolitan area and is served by those water providers that are members of that, of this organization. We also talked about the update to the strategic plan for the providers consortium. It's supposed to be done every five years, and it's that time to talk about it. We discussed what sort of involvement would be needed and what sort of changes and freshening up of the document are needed, so it was a very comprehensive meeting that we had. On the 19th, or excuse me, on the 12th of September, I attended a special board meeting where we talked about property acquisition. On the 19th, yesterday, I attended a finance committee meeting where we talked about long-term debt issues, and then tonight's meeting. That's it.
Thank you very much. I had five meetings, tonight's meeting, of course. On the 15th of September and the 18th of August, I attended the Oregon Taxpayer Coalition, where we talked about the process of different ballot measures that are taking place, a review of the last legislative session, and a discussion of the upcoming legislative session. I also attended the TBWD workshop where we, well, it's been discussed already, I won't repeat that. Also attended the meeting on the 4th with our CEO, Mark Nudson, of the Washington County Public Affairs Forum, where we represented TBWD, and it talked about a variety of topics, including the national state political scene, along with ways to solve hunger in the state of Oregon. So those are my meetings. Are there any topics that Commissioners would like to raise tonight? Okay, there are none? So now we will go to public comment. Public comment is timed set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. I have a blue sheet relating to fluoride, and so if Ms. Kim Hoyer would like to come up and provide your testimony, you'll have, I believe, five minutes to speak, and for the record, if you would, begin by stating your name and address for the record.
I don't have any meetings to report. This is my only one, so, sorry. Not very exciting. So I, I came here because I was under the impression that Portland did not fluoridate their water, and when I found that I lived in a water district that does, it really upset me, because I've researched to know the really harmful effects that fluoride can have. So one of the problems that I have with fluoride being put into our water supply system is that it's the only chemical added not for the purpose, for the purpose of medical treatment, and because fluoridization is really unethical, we need conformed consent, is a standard practice for all medication, to be applied, and you never know what someone's level of what they, you know, can handle in their bodies is going to be. Someone may drink a lot of water, which I do, so I could be getting poisoned with fluoride because I drink more water than the average person. So, and it's really impossible to control the dose that you So, and it's really impossible to control the dose that each individual receives when you're just throwing it into the water supply. Not only that, our skin is our biggest organ, and it's also being ingested into our body when we're taking showers and baths and that sort of thing. So, it's not taking into account, you know, different ages, weights of people. There's no way to control this when you're just putting it into the water supply system. In Europe, only Ireland, Poland, Serbia, and Spain, and the UK fluoridate any of their water. And most of these countries have proven that the statistics with cavities, there's no real huge significant decrease in cavities, because they're not fluoridating. So, it's, I think that studies are definitely proving that this is an old practice that needs to be changed. It's not, there's over 50, if you see the, what I gave you. I could keep going and going. Fluoride may lower IQs. It causes, affects the pineal gland, which is a major endocrine function in our brain that regulates our sleeping, all this. So, it calcifies the pineal gland, and research has been proven that this does. It's very toxic. If you look on any toothpaste, it says, "Please call the poison control if large amounts are ingested." You can get poisoned by it in large amounts. So, for me, drinking a lot of water, it's putting me at risk for being poisoned, and not even intentionally. It can damage, fluoride can damage bone, it can increase hip fractures in elderly, yada, yada, yada. It, anyway, like I said, I could keep going on. What I encourage you all to do is research it yourselves. There's, all of this is backed by scientific studies. And I think, for me as a citizen, I have the right to refuse certain medical treatment. And I refuse fluoride in my water. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. You are not the first person who's been here on this subject. However, from the board's point of view, the voters voted it in. The voters need to vote it out.
Although...
We can't just stop it.
Yeah. I would add to that, that there are two sections of the Twelton Valley Water District. We've got the Wolf Creek section, which is the area, I believe you live in, and it is fluoridated. And there's the Metzger section, which is not fluoridated. There was an election held some time ago, where those who didn't want fluoridation in Metzger prevailed, and those who did want fluoride in the Wolf Creek area prevailed. And since then, we've done public opinion surveys in both of those sections. And consistently, the people in Metzger don't want fluoride, and they do not receive it. The people in the Wolf Creek section of our district continue to want fluoride, continue to receive it. But we've been very careful to protect, we've been very careful to protect the interests of those who do not receive, that do not receive fluoride. There was an initiative, there was a vote in Portland, where they were going to fluoridate their water system. And if that had passed, our Metzger section would then be fluoridated as well, because they get their water from Portland. But I and others fought that, because they didn't want it. So, what we are encouraging citizens to do is, since there was an election, to put it in if they want it out, you know, get with people who agree. There are lots of people on both sides. Have an initiative and vote it out. And we will respect that. None of us are invested in keeping fluoride in. None of us are invested with keeping fluoride out. This is a system that belongs to the voters, and we will respect what they decide. One additional, a couple additional things.
Well, there's also legal issues here. And so, if I had an attorney come in and tell you that this is a legal unethical issue as far as my health goes...
We've researched all the legal and ethical issues. The American Dental Association is still recommending fluoride be added to the water. We've examined this issue as a board over the years, because we've had many citizens like you express concern. Now, the actions the board has taken is that the fluoride that is added is pharmaceutical-grade sodium fluoride. It is not hydrofluoric acid, which is the byproduct of...
Still, when you're ingesting it, it's not really helping your teeth anyway.
Well, I'm just telling you, the steps we did take, many agencies...
It doesn't even make sense. It's not even logical that your food drinking water, that's going to affect your teeth. It's stupid.
Many agencies use hydrofluoric acid, which is the byproduct of the fertilizer industry. And it's a much cheaper product. We use the higher-grade sodium fluoride, which is a different compound.
Either way, it's calcifying my pineal gland, and that's not what I want. So, I mean, it's not really, I'm sorry, it doesn't really...
I think this would be a great issue. I encourage you to find folks that agree with you and get it on the ballot. And, you know, if the voters, I mean, we can't come up with individual water systems for every single person. So, if they vote fluoride out, you will see the argument from us.
Well, if you do, if everyone does the research and looks at the overwhelming evidence, it should be a no-brainer. It shouldn't even need to be up for a vote, in my opinion.
Okay, well, thank you very much for coming. That's good fodder for a campaign. Thank you very much. Is there any other, is there any other comment tonight on any subject from anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. Consent agendas are items that are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request an item be removed by motion for discussion in separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items, which do not require discussion. The items on the consent agenda tonight are approval of the August 16th, September 5th, and September 12th minutes for meetings and work sessions. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion passes. This brings us to the business agenda. Item A, which I think is the only item here for motion tonight, is to consider adopting Resolution 29-17, establishing water rates and other service charges for the Twelton Valley Water District with an effective date of November 1st, 2017. Before we go into the staff report, I would like to note that we have received two customer comments that were received after the August 25th close of the public comment period. The comments and the staff responses have been provided to each of us as board commissioners. Will be included in the record, and we have read them. So, I would turn it over to our CEO for the staff report on this item.
So, very brief introduction. As you know, back in July, we started the process of evaluating rate strategies going forward. We had new additional input this year based on direction from the Rate Advisory Committee that had been formed last winter and included a dozen members of the public that provided additional input and suggestions. We've taken all of that. One of those key pieces of recommendation from the Rate Advisory Committee was a very, what I would call, inclusive outreach process in terms of the rate-making process. And so, this evening, our CFO, Paul Matthews, will provide an overview of both the process as well as the rate recommendation, and provide a final recommendation of a resolution for your consideration. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mark. President Burke, commissioners, tonight we take the final step in what I describe as almost a seven-month process of setting the water rates for the district. That process started back in March, when we took the board and the Citizens Budget Committee on a tour of our facilities and started developing the district's budget, and continues on today. Tonight, I want to cover four topics with you pretty briefly. All the information I'm presenting tonight has been presented to you previously, so I'm going to summarize it fairly quickly and be available for questions. We also present this information at the open houses that you attended. So, the four things I want to talk about tonight. First, I want to talk about the rate and financial process that we follow. I'll talk about the public outreach efforts that we had, give you an overview of the district's 30-year financial plan, and then I'll talk about the rate proposal itself. So, I mentioned the process started more than seven months ago, as we started developing the district's biennial budget. Presented here is what we describe as the rate and financial process. It starts really with the budget and the strategic direction that we have to pursue. But the budget alone doesn't provide us the information we need to set rates. So, from that, we develop a 30-year financial plan. We literally look out 30 years at the district's needs to come up with the rate proposals we're talking about tonight. Once we have the financial plan in place, that provides us the opportunity then to develop the specific rates, design the rates that we're proposing here tonight. And then last, the most important part then, is to deliver to the customers the, on the services that we provide. We had an elaborate public process this year, and as Mark indicated, that was a result of recommendations from our Rate Advisory Committee. And what part of that is sending out a postcard, and we've shown here, both sides of the postcard, that we mailed to all the customers of the district to let them know of the process that we were following. We highlighted the three open houses that we were having, as well as the public hearing that took place last month. I mentioned the Rate Advisory Committee. That was a committee, actually, that you appointed last, not last July, the July before that, to look at the district's rate process. They made many recommendations, and those recommendations are being worked on. But one of the important ones that they suggested is that the district consider adopting two years of rates at one time. This would allow the customers to plan for the rate increases, because it would be adopted coincidental with the budget process that we have. So, the rates we're proposing tonight follow that recommendation. They're set to be consistent with the budget that you adopted at your June meeting. As part of that, the Rate Advisory Committee also recommended that we take, that we have a more, an expanded customer outreach program. We did that through a series of open houses, and I'll talk about that here with this slide. We had a total of three open houses, where customers were able to come in. We made a presentation, a lot of detailed material that, about the rate process, allowed them an opportunity to talk to staff members and to provide us information. The goal of those open houses were to give customers the information that they needed, so they could prepare comments, meaningful comments, for your consideration of the rate proposal. We had three open houses. We also had the public hearing on August 16th. And now, we're at the process of adopting rates here tonight. So, coming back to the financial process that we have, I want to talk about the financial plan here in detail. First of all, Mark summarized is, or I'm going to summarize what Mark had presented prior, the key priorities of the district. So, as we went through both the August rate hearing, as well as the open houses, Mark presented information about the district's priorities going forward. In addition to that, he highlighted the things that the district will deliver, and a couple of these are very critical. One would be, obviously, delivering 16 billion gallons of safe drinking water. That's what the water district does. But we do a lot of other things, and Mark highlighted that in his presentation. He also talked about the various risks that threaten our water supply, the Cascades Reduction Zone that we've been talking about, as well as drought and climate change. And he highlighted the capital improvements plan that we have, source projects with the Joint Water Commission, as well as a major storage project that we're doing with the Grabhorn Reservoir. We talked about those with the board, as well as with the citizens at the open house. Dave Kraska talked about the Willamette Water Supply Program. This is a major civil engineering project that we have going on at the district. It's a very, very important project to provide water to our customers. Dave talked about the accomplishments that the program has achieved over the past two years. And he also highlighted the upcoming projects, and he spent quite a bit of time walking through and describing how the program was operating. All of that led to a series of customer comments, and you've been provided all the customer comments. We talked about that at the work session earlier this month, and you have the two latest comments that we've received. One, in fact, we got just on Monday. We put the customer comments into three broad categories, those that were negative, those that were positive, and others that are suggestions to management. We talked about this at the September workshop, but in a sense, we got a variety of comments. Most of the negative comments were around the rates being too high, effect on customers with fixed income, and those things that we've talked about. We looked at how many comments we received this year versus how many we've received in the past, just to see whether or not our customer outreach process was helping. And I presented this table to you in the past, showing when we received those customer comments. And I think we can say from this that the open houses were successful in providing meaningful, meaningful information to our customers. The last two comments that we received here that came after the public comment period cut off of August 25th, they are not on this table. So, coming back to the rate financial process, before we get into the financial forecast going forward, I want to talk about where the district is right now. And I provided this summary to our customers at you as well. We're starting the 17, we're into the fiscal year, the biennium 1719, and we are, in fact, in a strong financial position. Our cash balances are strong, our revenues are strong, our assist development charges are strong, and those are the charges that we assess new customers to offset the cost of growth, and we are debt-free. You might remember that I presented also the district's capital improvements plan in a tabular form here. Here are the expenditures that we have for the water supply program, for our investment with the Joint Water Commission, as well as our in-district CIP. Presented that also in a graphic format, and you can see the blue area there, being the investment in the Willamette Water Supply, is a big, big effort for the district. That leads us to our, our projection of future debt service. Much of the Willamette Water Supply Program will be debt-funded. Right now, we're estimating about $500 million of it will be debt-funded. And that puts us in a situation that by 2027, we'll need almost $35 million a year to service that debt. These rate increases are moving our revenue base to the point where we can support that long-term debt. Key findings from our financial plan, first, the Willamette Water Supply Program does dominate the district's capital expenditures, as you can see from the paragraph. Our debt service is likely to be about $35 million by 2027. A lot of assumptions associated with that, but that's our best estimate at this point. There are benefits of the district of pushing capital expenditures out past 2027, and we're working to do that. And the forecast is subject to risks. I presented this chart to you, and I discussed it with our customers as well. There are a lot of risks that we look at when we do our financial forecast. Couple that I want to highlight here, one is with the city of Portland. As you know, the city of Portland is looking to install a filter plant for its water system that will increase the cost of water that we purchase from Portland in the future. The other thing is the long-term debt. Currently, we have access to tax-exempt debt, meaning the interest on the debt that we pay is not taxable for those people who hold our debt. Congress is looking at removing that tax exemption for local governments, and that could increase the cost of our debt and increase the interest rates that we have to pay. Coming back to that rack recommendation, we are then, our proposal does have two years of rate increases at once. So, here they are. We presented this information to our customers as well. The district has both a Block 1 and a Block 2 rate. We have a tiered rate, so that the cost of service, the cost, the bill that people receive is related to the cost of serving those. Customers who have high water use in the summer cause more to serve, because we need that additional capacity to serve them during that limited summer period. So, here, we presented the Block 1 and the Block 2 rates in our rate proposal. Those are what are included in the resolution that you're considering tonight. We also have fixed monthly charges that vary on the size of the meter. Again, those are designed to recover the cost of service from customers. We look at the impact on our typical customers. Our typical customer consumes 7 CCF of water per month, which is a little bit over 5,000 gallons. Presented here are the impacts in a graphical format. Here it is in a tabular format, and you can see from this that it's an increase for the typical customer, about $5.51 per month in November 2017, and $6.22 per month in November of 2018. We presented to the customers as well, those that are above average. So, here's an above-average customer with 12 CCF of water per month, and these are the impacts on them graphically, as well as in a tabular form. We also compared our rates and typical bill to others, other communities in the Portland metropolitan area. Presented here is a table that shows the Twelton Valley Water District's current rates, as well as what they will be with the rates that are proposed for November of 2017. In addition to adjusting our water rates, we also have other charges that we... In addition to adjusting our water rates, we also have other charges that we adjust, and we presented this to the district, to the board at the public hearing. These charges we adjust on annual basis to make sure that our customers aren't being subsidized or being charged to, to cover the cost of others. So we are proposing those increases that we presented to the board in August. They're presented here as well. And here are some additional charges. So with that, staff's recommendation is the board adopt Resolution 2917, adopting the new rates. The new rates will be effective November 1st, 2017, and November 1st, 2018. With that, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions? For those who might be watching on television, the reason why there are no questions tonight, or at least I think one of the reasons, is because this presentation and variants of it have been presented to the board many, many times as part of our public outreach process. So all of us at one time or another have had numerous questions, but they've been answered. And staff has done an excellent job of providing good information, not only to us, but also to the public. I've been on this board since 1999, and this is the most extensive public outreach program I have ever seen for a rate process. All of the commissioners have participated at one open house or another in different events. Staff has been there. Some of the events have been very well-attended, others, staff outnumbered the people. But in any case, there was always abundant information, and I think the reason why we don't have people here tonight with pitchforks and torches is because we have, I think, done a very good job of explaining the need for these rate increases and how they will apply it, and satisfying the people who have been interested of the fact that this is a very well and efficiently-run organization and that we do not fritter money away. I remind everyone that all of us here are Tuolton Valley Water District rate payers. As commissioners, we do not get free water. We do not get discounted water. When we raise rates, we raise them on ourselves as well, and that's something that brings us no joy. But for the future of this district, to make sure that we're able to secure water at an affordable rate and quality water in the future, this period of time is necessary. And I applaud my fellow board members with having the political courage to go forward with it, and thank members of the staff providing the good information to show why it is necessary and how it will be applied. So that is my comment. Does anyone else have anything to say?
Well, I just wanted to thank staff for the workshops, one of them on one of the hottest days of the year. I appreciated the effort that was put into advertising and, and getting as many avenues explored of, of spreading the word on what we were doing here. So thank you for doing that. I did have one correction on what you said, Richard. Just one.
We do get, we do get free water when we show up to the meetings to drink. That's, that's true. We're all drinking the water now. That's right. I stand corrected.
I don't know if that's considered part of our compensation, being able to drink during the meetings, water, that is.
That is.
Yeah.
Well, it looks like water anyway. Thank you, Richard. But thank you very much. I stand corrected. Is there any other comment?
Yeah, I'd like to add that having worked for several other public entities in the past, I want to second what, what Commissioner Burke said, that this has been the most unusually extensive public outreach effort that I have ever seen to pass a rate resolution, and I think it's been one of the most effective as well. I applaud all of the work that staff did on this.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 29-17, establishing water rates and other service charges for the Tuolton Valley Water District with an effective date of November 1st, 2017.
So moved.
Commissioner, don't move. Is there a second?
A nice second.
Commissioner Bagnell seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is an informational presentation relating to the Willamette Water Supply Program Treatment Plant Site Acquisition, presented by Principal Engineer Todd Perman. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Perman.
Perman.
Let me provide just a tad bit of background before you get going, Todd. Thank you. This item will sound a little familiar to you. We've been talking about property issues quite a bit over the last few months, and as you know, earlier this month, we held a special meeting to take a very timely action on the acquisition of a site for the new Willamette Water Treatment Plant. The fact that you've already taken action on this would lend the question of, well, why are we bringing it back tonight? Really, two reasons. And, and I had actually asked for this informational presentation largely because, first of all, it was a special meeting, and so my goal was to actually have this issue also aired tonight as part of the, the regular meeting so that those that might watch it on TV can be aware of the fact that this has occurred. And secondly, to simply draw attention to the fact that this is a major milestone in terms of ongoing progress on implementation of the Willamette Water Supply Program. This actually essentially sets the foundation, both figuratively and literally, for the future of the water treatment plant for our new Willamette Supply. So with that, I will, we'll turn it over to Todd and basically provide an overview of the, the new treatment plant site.
Great. Thank you, Mark. President Burke, Commissioners. So thank you for the opportunity to give this brief update on the, our efforts to acquire a site for the water treatment plant. So as you are aware, the water treatment plant will be one of the four major components of the Willamette Water Supply System, the others being the raw water facilities and intake on the middle Willamette in Wilsonville, our supply tanks for finished water, which will be located in the Cooper Mountain areas, and our 30 miles of transmission pipeline, which will tie it all together. And our water treatment plant facility will be located in between the raw water facilities and the storage tanks. So to establish our preferred site for this water treatment plant, our multidiscipline team within the program office applied established criteria, including system compatibility, which took into account the size of the parcel that was available, to make sure that it was large enough to accommodate the treatment plant, accessibility and constructability, including how far the treatment plant would be from our preferred pipeline route, as well as our other standard criteria of social community impacts, environmental and permitting, opportunities and benefits, and of course, operations and maintenance. So by applying the criteria, doing a high-level screening, and then doing a detailed analysis, we landed on our preferred water treatment plant site, which you can see here. It's just south of, and adjacent to, Tuolton and Sherwood Road. From a compatibility standpoint, there's, at 95 acres, it's more than sufficient to house the water treatment plant. It's located in the Tonkin Employment Area and a appropriate commercial and industrial zone where the water treatment plant would, would be compatible. There's some significant natural resources on the site, which offers permitting and environmental advantages. And one of the, the other benefits of this site is, is located adjacent to our 124th Avenue project, which is, as you know, is our partner project with Washington County to construct 124th Avenue and our transmission line. So we don't have to build a lot of additional pipe, or any additional pipe, frankly, to be able to get to this water treatment plant. So that's, that's a big benefit for us. So looking at the, the site in a little more detail, as you can see, we have 124th Avenue on the eastern border of the property. And one of the unique features of this property is the coal pond, which is located in the lower corner of the property. Coal ponds are a unique natural feature. They actually were created during the Missoula floods, and when the water flow through the area scoured into the bedrock, it created these natural depressions. This one happens to have some very high-value wetland in it, which offers some environmental enhancement opportunities for the program and potentially community benefits in the As I mentioned, this site is located within an industrial zone. This is in the Tonkin Employment Area, which will be in the city of Sherwood in the future. And those plans indicate a future road to be located across this property, referred to as Blake Road. This is consistent with the Tonkin Employment Areas. It's going to improve local connectivity, eventually extending beyond our property out to Oregon Street within the city of Sherwood. This, the location of this intersection is of particular interest to a number of stakeholders, including Washington County, the cities of Sherwood and Tuolton, and the local property owners within the region. We've had numerous conversations with all of those stakeholders and have built a consensus on the general location of Blake Road, which is similar to what we see here. And that, that coordination will be ongoing to determine that final location. There's a PGE easement that crosses the property, which has overhead power lines. So we have some power lines that go over the top of the coal pond. There's one tower on the property, and Blake Road will also go under those. With development of the treatment plant, there's the potential that a new substation will be required in the area, and our coordination with PGE has been ongoing, and we'll continue to have those discussions with them. In the southeast corner of the property, we're at this point sort of identifying this as a preservation area. It's an open space where our environmental scientists friends will tell us that this is an established wildlife corridor, providing access to wildlife into the coal pond. It also offers some opportunity for open space preservation, which could be a land use and development requirement. And in general, we, we wouldn't want to put water treatment process facilities on either side of the easement, which would require large pipes to extend across that easement, but ancillary facilities, storage, things of that nature that probably aren't process-related could be located over there, and that could be determined during the process. And finally, one of the more interesting and I think exciting opportunities with this property is the, the potential for regional industrial development on the north side of the parcel. When we establish the location of Blake Road and dedicate that right-of-way, we will be able to partition the property and sell that northern portion to a developer who had a pre-existing contractual interest in the property. A number of things will, will come from that through the industrial development. It will increase economic activity in the area, which is compatible with the goals of the Tonkin Employment Plan and economic development within the area. So you can see as we apply these areas to the, the area of the parcel, we have a very well-defined area for our water treatment plant. In doing so, we need to make sure that there is still enough room on the site for the treatment plant. And we can see through this three-dimensional model, which represents the processes that we anticipate to use for our treatment plant and design. This shows a layout of 120 million gallon-per-day treatment plant, and you can see there's more than adequate room, including buffers from the coal pond and Blake Road, which is shown in this here. So with that, I'm more than happy to be able to say, as Mark mentioned, that this is a significant milestone for the program, and we have, through many months of negotiation and coordination, have been able to negotiate for a purchase of this property. As I mentioned, the northern portion will be sold to the developer with a prior contractual interest, and our coordination with other multiple interests in the area, including Washington County, Sherwood, Tuolton, and local property owners will be ongoing. Did I mention this is a major milestone for the program? This is a major milestone for the program. We're very, many, many, many months of discussion over this. So our, our next steps, we're going to close the purchase on the full parcel in November. We need to continue our coordination of Blake Road with the local stakeholders and establish that final layout. We'll be performing boundary and topographic surveys and continued public outreach over the next few months, and the boundary and topographic surveys are going to facilitate our preparation of the site partition application through Washington County, which we will submit in April of 2018. So with that, I would like to leave you with this picture of the coal pond, which was taken during the rainy season last year. This gives you an idea of, of what the, the lay of the land is out there, and take any questions that you might have on the parcel or the process or next steps.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I think that concludes our business agenda for the evening, so without objection, I will adjourn this meeting. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.